Okay, today is Tuesday, August 12th, 2025. I call the Village Board to meet an order. Where the clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Bush?
Here.
Trustee Frankie?
Here.
Trustee Jerash?
Here.
Trustee Laskin?
Here.
Trustee Miller?
Here.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
I do want to commend all six trustees tonight. I thought for sure by now you would have fled to like Schaumburg and been hiding out there instead of doing your work here, you know?
Are you redistincting?
Yeah, well, I'm not sure if we're redistincting, but no, I thought, thank God trustee or Mr. Nikabak had caught my joke because it would have fallen flat otherwise. I thought that was pretty good. I thought that was pretty good, don't you?
Schaumburg wouldn't take me.
Yep, so, but you know what, folks? You wonder why we state local government? It's because we don't have to deal with the crap they deal in Springfield and Washington and stuff. Our people actually do the job they're supposed to do. And that's because we don't play party politics.
No, we don't.
Because we're nonpartisan. And that's why all governments should be nonpartisan, do what they're supposed to. So with that said, I want to get on the good side of Pastor Gentek. That's why I'm also talking that way. So, we have the invocation, pledge allegiance. Pastor, if you come down, please. Everyone, please rise. Pastor Gentek from the Trinity Gospel Church will do our invocation, and then we'll do the pledge allegiance after that. Pastor, please.
Okay, please join me in a word of prayer. Father God, we come before you, just humbled and thankful for this opportunity to come together on this special occasion to serve this good city of Elk Grove Village that you've entrusted to these leaders and the citizens of it. Pray your blessing upon this time, knowing that everything is under your control, under your sovereign control. Everything comes from your hands and for your glory. So pray your blessing upon this time, and give the leaders wisdom and unity as they navigate to do your will, to serve this city that you've entrusted them with. Bless this time, God, in Jesus Christ's mighty name. Amen.
Amen. The flag's to my right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Look how sharp Brian looks. Look at that tie. Look at that tie. Huh? Man alive. Wow, he cleans up good. Oh my God.
How bad did he look before?
You know, trustee, of course, you're just saying something, he's right. Didn't I say when I came in, I came in and said the same thing? I said, "Look how sharp he looks."
I'm just trying to keep up with you guys.
Very GQ, right? He had no kid, look at that.
Thank you, guys.
You know why? Christians have been very generously there at their collection party, so.
This is from H and M. It's very cheap.
Well, as always, Pastor, we do thank you. Got some nice chocolate chairs for you.
My kids will love it. Thank you so much.
I know. We appreciate everything going good this summer?
Very well, yes.
Kids back at school yet?
Uh, next week. Prayers go up.
That's when parents go, "Thank you."
I hope we do this, yes.
Well, thank you again. I appreciate it. Take care.
Thanks. How you doing?
Okay, we move on to approval of the minutes of July 15th, 2025.
I move that we approve the minutes from July 15th.
Second? We have motion by trustee Jerash, second by trustee Bush. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show unanimous approval. Okay, Mayor and Board of Trustees report, I apologize upfront, because we only meet once a month, we've had a lot of things popping recently, so bear with us for a few minutes. The mayor's got a few things to go through, so I'm saying that front, trustee Frankie, I apologize in advance.
Can you call me when you're done?
Yes, we'll wake you up. First off, we had Rotary Fest, and the big part is we had one of our bands there, OER, was a nice concert, went very well, good kids, brought about 50,000, you thought, Jeff?
At least.
Yeah, 50,000.
Maybe I won't section it.
Take 45.
Went very good, so we appreciate that. Then on July 22nd, to your surprise, Scotty McCreery. You really enjoyed that show, didn't you?
I did.
Now, George had no clue who Scotty McCreery was. Not a clue. He thought his songs were great, could understand, not too loud, not much.
Family Guy.
Family Guy. So, he did, and he had a bigger crowd than I think any of us expected that night. So, that went very well. And then we finished up with our last concert, which was also another great crowd, BTO, Back to the Turnover Drive. So, that was a real rock concert, right?
I had some issues with it.
Yeah, it was a rock concert, loud, and that's rock. So, they did a great job, too. Lot of people, I'm surprised how many compliments we got for BTO. I mean, you know, we got them for all of them, but I would bet you this year, BTO got the most compliments. They were, I mean, we got people emailing, people, actually someone stopped by the village, said something, and then we got a couple letters. People loved BTO. So, and they were actually probably the oldest band we had this year. I think Randy was, the oldest singer we had this year.
Older than me.
That's not easy, but they did. So, the concerts are done. Yes, we are working on next year's concert lineup. It's our 70th anniversary lineup, so we're thinking in the fall, we'll be announcing that lineup for next year for our anniversary, along with some other events we got going on. Also, we haven't announced our tree lighting concert yet, so that we're actually still working on. So, hopefully we have that announcement in September, and we'll have that band lined up for our tree lighting, because think about it, it's only three months away.
Wow.
That's how fast, it goes so fast. Way too fast. Also, during that time, we had a transit roundtable. Mr. Matt Jerome and I met with Laura Murphy, our state senator. Tom Dale was there from Schaumburg, Mayor from Displanes, McCloud was there, Rod Craig was there, so we had quite a few mayors there, and mainly talking about what's going to happen with Metro, CTA, Pace, and all that. So, it's going to be a tough one, but we're trying to work on it to see if we can get it taken care of and get that done. Also, we had coffee with the board back on last Saturday, October or August 2nd. Nice turnout, went good. Of course, they had Jerash Bakery good, that gets them all coming very happily. Also, on August 2nd, I went to, believe it or not, White Cliff, celebrated their 25th anniversary. It doesn't seem like it's that old.
No, I remember they had their models up.
Yep, and they invited me out to speak to their, all the residents, they have a homeowners association, they had a 25th anniversary, appreciate the opportunity to go out and talk and meet with them, that went well. Then August 4th, also had a parade meeting. Again, our grand marshals this year were celebrating, we shouldn't have to celebrate, we shouldn't need it, the Elk Grove Cares Program. Remember Elk Grove Cares Program, our program is the program we have that battles the disease of addiction. The disease of addiction. No one wakes up in the morning wanting to be addicted to heroin, or cocaine, or alcohol. It's a disease. So, we're going to honor the Elk Grove Cares Program. Darryl Pass from Kenneth Young's going to be there, Des Rapperty, our former social worker, Mike Aspari, our former deputy police chief, who was instrumental in it, and then Kristin and Talia from our social workers now with the village, will all be our honorary grand marshals, and we're looking forward to that on, it is September 20th, and that's part of Frankie Fest. So, that should work out well, we're looking forward to that, and it should be good. Again, we talked about Rotary Fest and the concert there, of course, I mean, Rotary Fest had a great year this year, but something we all talked about for a while, that I'd like to give an answer to, if anyone was around, back in April, the board was visited by a couple gentlemen that weren't too happy with the village, would you say, Mr. Nikabaker?
I'm trying to think of, um...
They were a little upset when they came in here, got a little mad at the board, or...
Oh, those...
The old man mayor?
Yeah, that's true, that's true, that is you.
The old man mayor?
Those two men.
Yeah, it challenged, uh, challenged for, uh, Justin James. His wife was pregnant at the time, right there, they weren't too good.
Wasn't good.
Well, as people may know, and most people do, because it's been quite talked about, we actually settled that score over Rotary Fest, and we had a professional wrestling match that day. First off, I've been going around the Elk Grove belt, we're proud to announce that Jim Gorinson, Elk Grove's very own, Jim Gorinson, won the village board's belt in their match, and we congratulate Jim on winning the belt, and he did well in his match. But we also had a chance for the mayor and Justin to team up with Joe and Paul against the bad guys, bad hombres, as they call themselves. And Maggie, if you would, Dan Hossi was our guest referee, Jimmy, Jimmy runs Powell Entertainment, Powell Professional Wrestling, he's Elk Grove resident, obviously a great crowd, it rained until 1:15 that day, but we still able to get the match off at 2:30, a little bit later, but Jimmy was coming in there. Maggie? Justin, obviously sent a little message to one of the hombres that showed up talking smack about the village and Justin and the mayor and stuff, so I think he's out in good position there, is he, Mr. Nikabaker?
Doesn't look like it.
No, not happy. And obviously, the mayor did not let the village down, so I'm team mayor, so that's Javier, the gentleman that actually talked the most smack at the board meeting. Javi called me an old man, well, I think, Mr. Nikabaker, in that picture, I think Javi looks like the old man, don't you?
Yes, indeed, you got even.
Like I'm about to burp him or something, and, you know, take care of him there.
It's gotta be AI-generated, that can't be true.
No, that's, that's, after 10 weeks, trust me, and all the bruises, the mayor was ready for this. Maggie? That's Angel. Didn't take too good care of Angel, and the Angel's word, but took care of him for talking smack about us. He was definitely finished. And to your shock, it looks like the mayor's going for a flight there, huh? Mayor coming down, that's all four of the hombres I see, bad hombres on the jacket, mayor's taking care of the bad hombres there.
All four of them.
Maggie? I think, who's the only one standing there, huh? Or at least getting up there? The hombres are down, so, and what happened at the end of the day? Team Elk Grove came through, we told people they can't come to the village board meeting and talk smack about us, we didn't even need the chief to protect us that day, like at the board meeting. So, we came through, we made Elk Grove proud, trustee Frankie was there, he was very excited, happy, he gave the belt to Jim Gorinson, and then he had to pay homage to team Elk Grove, correct?
This is true. The only thing I can recommend is you get out in the sun a little more.
Yeah, a little white there, so, but there is one thing to point out, Maggie, back up a couple pictures there. Hang on, back up, back up, back up, back up, stop there, no, go for it, right there. What are those there? What'd you say those were, trustee Bush? Were those guns you saw on the mayor there?
Oh, yeah.
The mayor packing guns that day?
Yeah, right, yeah. Without a permit.
Yeah, without, chief? You let me go that day? Hey, not bad.
Not even a concealed carry, you unconcealed.
Oh, I showed him, I bragged about it.
Maybe sleeves next year, be careful.
I don't know, not bad for a 65-year-old man, huh? Trust me, those guys are a lot younger than I was.
The bad hombres got humbled, you obviously did not. Just guessing.
That was good. Anyways, we had a lot of fun, we wanted to let the residents know where we finish up and go up the way, now that one go, Maggie? There, that will be the new village logo, we're going to take the elk down, that'll be the logo up here from now on, and our chocolates, the board voted on that earlier tonight, so I'm humbled by that one.
What a town, what a town, yeah.
I had to accept it, you know?
I'm sure you are.
What it is, so...
Is it too late to go to Schaumburg?
I want to do it before you went to Schaumburg. So, Maggie, thank you, good job. But I know people are asking what's going to happen next year, we don't know yet, we'll wait and see, we're talking, we'll see what may happen, but it was a lot of fun, a lot of more work than people realize, and again, I said this before, those folks that do that kind of wrestling, professional wrestling, remember, I've been involved in wrestling 55 years. I wrestle this youth, I've coached forever, and still coaching to this day. I've got so much respect for those wrestlers. You know, things may be a little scripted here and there, but the moves are for real. That Javier, when I had him up, he was going down, and when I had Angel before that, he was going over. Those moves are real. When I jumped, I actually jumped, that was, it's not fake. So, those guys are great athletes, they're in great shape, and I do give them a lot of due and credit that I probably wouldn't have done before, so I did learn something with that. So, we'll see what happens next year. Next, I would like to start off by thanking school board District 59, our grade school. On Wednesday of last week, they passed the expansion of our SRO program, Student Resource Officers. We're now going to have one permanently all-time at Grove Junior High, which we had before, but now we have a second one that will be touring around the five grade schools in Elk Grove. And backup, the SRO at Grove Junior High, when Officer Permiss can't be there, he can fill in for him. And he will spend some time, Displanes, I'll just say, is a little slow in getting their SRO for their schools, so since Friendship Junior High feeds into Elk Grove High School, our SRO will spend some time in Displanes, going to Friendship and their two grade schools. So, since the kids will feed in Elk Grove High School, it does make sense, I hope his Displanes gets their SRO going soon, very soon, hopefully. But we want to thank the school board for doing this. Trustee Schmidt and I sat in a car six years ago, snowing outside, election time, talking about, we need to get this going, we need to get an SRO going, so it finally happened, Steve.
It took a long time, but thank God.
We got it done. So, again, we do want to thank, remember, the SROs at schools, not just for security, they're there to have a positive mentoring relationship with students, in a positive way. Meet with them, talk to them, get to know them. They're also some of the students can rely on if they need assistance or guidance somewhere. It is a win-win. It makes a huge difference. Grove Junior High, this is the third year the SRO is there, the difference in that school is night and day. Night and day. We've gotten contact from parents, who kids would not go to the bathroom at Grove Junior High, they would not go to the bathroom, they were too scared. Now, the towns, for the first time, they actually go to the bathroom now. The hallways, everything, much less issues. So, the positive influence is working, it's making a difference, and we think, as we talked about, Steve and I, and Steve, remember, was a police chief, and was police officer for 41 years?
Correct.
Forty-one years, we need to work with even younger kids, that's why this junior, or grade school influence. A lot of times, by the time they get to junior high, it's too late to give them a good direction. Second, third grade, they're the most vulnerable, and they're also most susceptible to get help and guidance. So, that's a great way to do it. Again, we're setting the stage, we're looking forward to the rest of schools doing it. Like I say, it's a great thing, and I cannot thank District 59 and the board for stepping up the way they have, and we're looking forward to a long partnership on that. The board talked before, and tonight, we're going to talk a little bit. As you know, we, five years ago, we started a new accelerated roadway project of resurfacing and rebuilding roads, sidewalks, curbs. The sidewalk curb program's going great. If you go down any street, we did this year, you see so much new curbing and sidewalks, it's unbelievable. Our rear yard drainage is doing great, those are two of the big things we worked on. The last thing was, we had to catch up on getting our roads done. Any town that was built back in the 50s and 60s, like Elk Grove, Schaumburg, Hoffman Estates, we all had bases put in, what they thought back then was an inexpensive way to lay foundations for roads, that was posellonic basis. We're all finding out now, unfortunately, posellonic bases were not all what they were made out to be. So, our roads, we started five years ago and accelerated, we did like three times as many roads, starting five years ago than we did before that. We're now going to put even more money this up, next coming year, for roadwork. We're going to put an additional million and a half dollars a year into the road project. Not raising taxes for it, it's the revenue, we told you, the village is doing well, it's from the revenue coming in, we're going to earmark a million and a half dollars, additional dollars, into the road projects. So now we do about 3.2, 3.2 million, 3.2, 3.3 million a year in the residential side, we're going to kick up to almost 5 million a year on the residential side. That'll make a big difference. We got to catch up on these roads. Some of these roads, we resurfaced only about eight years ago, they look like they're 20 years old, 25 years old, because the bases are bad. The top is good, it's the bases. So, we're going to work on that, and we're going to start moving up on that, so you'll see even more roadwork coming next year. Also, on July 24th, we talked about, the village did buy and close on the shopping center area next to Home Depot, where Staples Curran's located, so we did close on it. The clock started ticking, Staples will be out no later than mid-October, and Nick Poppen is here today, on our...
Plant Commission.
Plant Commission finding for parking for the new hockey rink, so the hope is, August, maybe early September, construction starts, because Nick says, next August, we expect that new hockey rink to be open and ready for play. So, we did buy it, we did close on it, so that clock is ticking, and while Nick is sitting out there, our new shopping residential at the corner of Intex Road, Higgins, The View, is going to start really cranking. Glass is starting to go in this week on the two retail shopping areas, the asphalt's being laid around the two shopping areas, so fencing will be coming down soon, and you'll see the work really starting to kick up, and Nick told me yesterday, November 1st is still the date, they're looking for completion of the retail places. So, we're excited about that work, and that's going along very quickly. Also, you'll notice, ComEd finally got the power lines taken care of, remember, it used to be overhead power lines there, they got them all buried, so now we can get going on that bridge, and that bridge work is really starting to accelerate, and we're excited how that's moving along, and that should be done very soon. Also, Tony Road, I know people keep asking what's going on, Tony Road's going to be done in two phases, the north phase for Elk Grove Boulevard North, and the south phase, South Elk Grove Boulevard. The north phase will be kicked off big time come next year, that should be completed, the Michigan U-turn will be completed, Elk Grove Boulevard, and then the south phase, hopefully 27 or later, 28. That is a $22 million project, that road. 22 million. Right now, we've got 11 million in grants, we're relying hopefully for another 4 million. So, this village has worked very hard, and the staff, I congratulate on the hard work. We could get almost 15 out of the 22 million in that big road project, and that's a main road here in Elk Grove, between the industrial and the residential area, a lot of travelers from Land Meyer to Devon, but we can get 15 million out of 22 million done with grant money, and that means a lot. Next, going quickly here, Mr. Frankie, I'm working.
You're doing it.
Next, our scooter law, I know if you weren't talking about it, head and chief is here, he'll verify, that is going very well. Anyone driving around the village probably notices, far less, far less, scooters, e-bikes with kids, and those little dirt bike, mini bikes on the streets, far less. I know the officers are seeing way less. The tickets have dropped immensely from the first start, so, thank you, it's working. One thing I think is working is, from what I'm understanding, talking to people, we're hearing around, is a lot of parents are selling their kids' little scooters and stuff. Remember, I had four kids, parents get a lot of pressure from the kids, "Oh, come on, Dad, everyone else has a scooter, why can't I? Come on, Dad, come on, Dad," after why you say, "Okay, everyone else, you do it." We're here now, parents are selling them, because one of the kids that young can't use them on streets, and they shouldn't. That's why we passed the law. 11-year-old kids should not be operating motorized vehicles on public streets, they're too young. Again, despite what Dave Simmons said, we were on a radio together, WBEZ, a couple weeks ago, we're not against e-bikes, we're in favor. It's good environmentally, we think it's great, but it should be used by people that know how to operate motorized vehicles on streets. And as a state, and every state in this country is deemed, 16 and older get licensed to operate motorized vehicles on streets. We agree with the state, that's why we say, to use a scooter, or electric scooter, or an e-bike, electric bike on the street, you should have a license. You should be operating, that's a motorized vehicle, they're motorized vehicles. Well, they, they go, they only go 20 miles an hour. Let me tell you something, they did a lot of bike riding and bike racing. Go down on a bike at 20 miles an hour, you're going fast. That's not slow, that's cranking, and you got nothing around to pack you. And trust me, you battle a car, the car is never going to lose against an e-bike or a scooter. The car will always win. So, it works. So, I know Dave gets upset and stuff, you know, I think he understands, our job is to protect the health, safety, and welfare of this community, and since we've done this, we have been doing that, and we're excited. Now, I did talk to Michelle Musman, one of our state representatives, just this past Sunday, and she said the state is looking at a potential state law. The problem is, it's with the Secretary of State's office, and they won't get a report back until the earliest next spring, probably a year from now. So, we couldn't wait anymore, as most towns can't wait, hence why we did what we did. And one last thing, when you talk about that, is everyone was talking about the picture of all the dirt bikes at Wellington and Beastville Road by our village hall, there was like 20 of them. Well, guess what? We found through cameras in Schaumburg that the person that organized that dirt bike rally down our street parked his trailer with all the dirt bikes in Woodfield area and Schaumburg, and we've now located that gentleman, am I correct, chief? And the parents are bringing the young man in to face the consequences for what he did to our police department, am I correct? So, again, they may think they're cute, they may think they're funny and stuff, but that's why people say, "Why are these cameras out there?" They're immense help to protect our community in a lot of ways. And more importantly, you know, we're talking about people's safety. This guy with those kids out there on those dirt bikes going down Beastville Road, that was not a joke. That's very dangerous, very serious stuff. So, chief, I want to congratulate your department on doing a great job, I want to congratulate the parents of the young boy, bringing him in to face the consequences, I commend them for that. So, again, nice job on that. Okay, Alexian Brothers, as people know, Alexian Brothers have been making some changes and looking to make more changes in the future. So, what the village board is doing is, we are going to host a town hall meeting on Thursday, September 4th, at 6:30 PM at the Belvedere Banquets, here in Elk Grove. And I've been making conversations with Polly Davenport, Polly is the CEO of Alexian Brothers here, higher up in Ascension, which oversees all the Alexian Brothers hospitals, the two Alexian Brothers hospitals, and others, they're a national company. They're going to be there, along with the top doctors and nurses, and they're going to have an opportunity to explain to this community what is happening at Alexian Brothers today, and what the future of Alexian Brothers is going to look like. This is an important issue for this community. Elk Grove has partnered with Alexian Brothers for 60 years, they got their 60th anniversary next year, and we've partnered with them, helped them get the full interchange at 290. We've waived tens of millions of dollars in fees to assist them as a nonprofit hospital. We've helped them in many other ways. Our fire department, what do we give them, about 4,000 or 5,000 calls a year? Between 4,000 and 5,000 ambulance calls a year, most, almost all of them go to Alexian Brothers. So, we work with them in a lot of ways, but obviously, we've got some concerns, what's going on, this community. This is a chance for all of our residents to have a chance to ask the questions. So, how it's going to work is this way. First off, we're going to send a letter out to every household in Elk Grove, that letter will go out probably the end of this week, early next week, Maggie? So, every resident's going to know about the town hall. We're going to post it on our websites, we're going to post it on our Facebook sites, we're going to make our electronic signs, so it's going to be in our newsletter, everyone's going to have an opportunity. They'll be able to come that night, what's going to happen that night is, we're going to give Alexian Brothers the first opportunity to explain what's going on now, what the future looks like. So, they're going to have a chance to talk and explain all that. Then after that's done, I'll emcee that night, and we're going to open up for questions. I respect elected officials, allow them to go first, ask them questions, then any one of the audience that has a question they want answered, they're going to be able to do so. Two things I ask, one, don't be repetitive. If someone's already asked a question, be happy they asked it, you have gotten your answer, be happy it's been done. Two, it's not meant to be a personal time. I don't want someone showing up saying, "Well, I sent you my check for my payment three weeks ago, and hasn't cleared the checking account yet, what's going..." That's not what it's meant for. It's meant for the overview of how the hospital's going to serve, not only our community, but the surrounding region. But they will stay there until every question is answered. If they don't have an answer, they will get back to you with an answer. But they will be there. And I've already talked to Polly about this. You know, we're not gonna say, "It starts at six-thirty, we're done at eight." No. If you gotta go to nine, ten, eleven o'clock, they will. But this is our chance to find out. Please understand, something we're all disappointed with, but I've done my research, the board, all of us. Community hospitals are basically gone. They don't exist anymore. It's a new world. That's why they all go in these conglomerations. You might find a rural farm town in Nebraska, they still might have a community hospital. So that's unfortunately a fact of life, community hospital's gone. But it doesn't mean Alexian Brothers cannot act and work like a community hospital. And that's what we wanna see that night. So again, if you got concerns, you got questions, come that night. We hold hundreds and hundreds of people. You'll have your chance to ask directly to them. I've got questions, the board's got questions, just like a lot of residents do. We gotta work this through, because this is an important issue for this community and an important issue for the hospital. Do that. Then after that, on September sixteenth, right here in the council chambers, the state board that they've applied to to have maternity operations moved from Alexian just to St. Alexis, so we no longer have maternity ward at Alexian Brothers Hospital, they will gather public comment on that issue. Because they will make the determination of Lexian will have the authority to move it over there. But I think you need to be informed before you decide if you wanna ask the question. They may give us good answers, may not be a concern anymore. They may not give you good answers, then it's your concern, you can show up. But if you come to that hearing, it's from four PM to seven PM. We asked them to move it later, a lot of people come after work if they want to, right here. How that hearing works is you come in, you've got two minutes to state your case. There'll be no dialogue back and forth. No one to answer questions, you can't ask the panel that's here questions. They're just there to collect information. Then they compile all your information into binders. They present it over to the state board. And November twelfth, the state board will make a decision whether they're gonna grant it or not. So that's why on the fourth is your opportunity to hear. You may have questions now that you didn't before and you may come. Or you may have your questions answered and say, "No need to go to the hearing, my question's answered." So again, September fourth, six-thirty PM, Belvedere Banquets. Be there if you got questions you want answered. You'll be treated respectfully. We ask you to treat the Alexian Brothers people respectfully. In Elk Grove, we're all friends and neighbors. We all work together, live together, have fun together. We keep that going. So it should not be a problem. So with that said, I will skip that one thing we talked about. Tom, I gotta talk to you about something, don't let me forget, that I didn't talk about tonight. With that said, we do have a presentation tonight, a good presentation. Like I said, Joanna, if you folks want to come join me, from Align Data Centers. What are you gonna do, George? What are you gonna change there?
Nothing.
Can you do an electronic deposit on there?
Come on, come on. Where you going?
He's trying to replace us.
Joanna, come up here. Who's gonna be the speaker?
We have both Connor and Bill speaking.
Okay. You're the money girl? Okay, hang on to that. As you know, Align Data Center is building a new data center on Arlington Road. The one close to the tollway, actually close to the cemetery. And we're very thankful and we work very well with all the data centers. But I gotta tell you, Align is gonna be a poster child of how data centers should look. Because you guys have done an absolute phenomenal, guys and ladies, I apologize, absolute phenomenal job on that building. It looks so much more appealing than other buildings look like. I don't wanna pick on anybody. And we cannot thank you enough. Let's be honest, data centers are big buildings. There's no way around it. Hundreds of thousands of square feet, two, three stories tall. They're big boxes. But what you've done with the accents, the landscaping, the fencing, really has made a big difference. And we thank you for that. Because that's an inch away into Elk Grove. The View Shopping Center that Nick over there is developing for Elk Grove. That is beautiful looking when you come in. And we want to make sure when they come in before that, they can go by your place, they see another beautiful structure what they are. So we thank you for that. That makes a big difference. So anyways, as people know, we talked about last week, we're doing a project for the Elk Grove Cemetery. That's the cemetery that was put in by the farmers, the founders of Elk Grove Village, this whole region. You see the name, Bussey Road, Tony Road, Cosman Road, all the roadways around here. Those named after the farmers that founded this area. And they're buried in that cemetery. It's less than an acre, eight hundred and some plots are in there. There are actually still some for sale. But that has been in disrepair for a number of years. So since Elk Grove Cemetery is home to the only Revolutionary War veterans buried in all of Cook County, that includes the entire city of Chicago, all those older cemeteries, only two Revolutionary Veterans are documented, buried in Cook County. Both are in the Elk Grove Cemetery. So we thought what perfect timing to fix that up, then get it done and ready for next year's Fourth of July, which would be the two-hundred-and-fiftieth birthday of America. Elk Grove's seventieth birthday, departure's sixtieth, Alexian Brothers' sixtieth. So it's perfect timing to get all that done and complete. And as we told, promised the residents of Elk Grove, Elk Grove Village tax dollars, we're not using village tax dollars to do it. We raised the money for this project. And don't jump on your boat too much. That gentleman sitting out there, Nick Papa Nicholas, was personally very generous in his donation, just as you folks are doing. So we raised the money. We're just about there and it's gonna be beautiful. If you go by there right now, they're working on tombstones as we speak. And they're getting them all fixed. People are already saying to me, "Mary, there's a lot more bodies in there all of a sudden." No, they're finding the old farmer's tombstones that had been knocked over, covered with dirt over two centuries. They're finding them and they're actually restoring them and putting them back up. A little quick history, a little funny thing. Put that down for a second, your arm's gonna get tired. I feel bad. So a little bit of history found. They were digging, they looked for the tombstones underground. They actually take a metal rod, they line a rope up so they know where the tombstones are, the graves are. And they go along, they find them. Well, they're finding sometimes a lot of two tombstones, sometimes three tombstones for the same person. What happened is, back in eighteen hundreds, if a tombstone broke or disrepair, the family would go out there, dig a little hole, bury the old tombstone, and put another one in. So when they're looking, they're finding all these old tombstones and they're going, "What do we do now? We got two or three tombstones for one grave." So it's a little bit of history how things were different back then and how they took care of things. So if you go by now, you see that work going on. The new fence will be going in probably in the end of August, hopefully September, all the way around it. The roadway will be done next spring before the dedication. New roadway, new curbs, new lights going in there, new flagpole going in there. So it's gonna be all revised. The tollway right now, thank you, the tollway's actually doing the work. So they're fixing, because there's a lot of flooding issue coming off the, they expanded the tollway up there. A lot of flooding coming down, undermining the graves. They're out there now fixing the stuff there, so that's good. So it's really gonna be different, but it's really a piece of history here in Elk Grove. And again, Align is here tonight to show how much they appreciate even part of the history. So who wants to speak first? By all means.
Thank you, Mr. and village leaders and Fire Chief and Police Chief, thank you. Being part of the community is so important to Align, not just being part of it, but being actively engaged in projects that mean something. I'm not sure whether it's the Revolutionary War, why they had an ex-British person come and talk about that, but obviously I apologize on behalf of my motherland. But thank you for being such active community members and helping us be that with you. So thank you.
You want to say?
Yeah. Yeah, thank you again, all trustees, village and police chief. Yeah, like Phil said, it's an honor to be able to contribute to the preservation of this cemetery, just knowing that our Revolutionary War vets fought and kind of died to protect the country and that we're able to help honor it for two fifty and year anniversary is amazing. So we're so happy to be here. We're really looking forward to being a part of the village going forward.
Thank you. And you may recognize Align, they were here a couple months ago and gave a nice size little check to our food pantry. So we are very thankful. So these companies, you know, I don't want them to hear too much of this. You know, people talk about, "Oh, data center, data center." Data centers, first off, are such needed, especially since COVID. Everyone's got, except for the mayor, everyone's got cell phones here. Everyone's got computers, laptops, iPads, all that. They wouldn't work today without data centers. They provide the cloud service, they're all the stuff we need to make all this technology work. Without them folks, we wouldn't have it. It is a vital, necessary need for this world to have them done. We thank them. But not only that, but for them to step up and be good partners above and beyond that, not just doing their job, but going above and beyond, that's phenomenal. And no offense to Align, all the data centers have been very good to work with. They've been great. So again, this is necessary for this community and for the world. And we're glad Elk Grove's the Midwest hub for data centers. We love it, we love working with them. Align does more and more work, we like that. And you know, we're very happy to have them here and we're very appreciative of you stepping forward. So Joanna's got here for us today, come on up, come on. And you presented a check for?
It is twenty-five thousand and we've matched another five hundred dollars for the cemetery's money.
That was, the match was, yes. So we appreciate it and we can't thank you enough. Come over here, get in there. Hey, load it a little bit. Come on, get it right there, he's got it. Hang on a second. Go ahead. So we thank you again. Now here's the test, hang on, you've been holding for a while. Hang on. Didn't bounce. So we're good. We accept it. George, can you pull this up, put it in your pocket, bring it home to the cash slot?
I'd like to.
So we can, did you want to say something?
No, no.
Well, we do want to thank you again for being here. I know it took a little bit before you got up here. But we do also want to thank you working with us. Give you example of how, and other companies do it, other companies do this too. But like Align, they come and meet with us. One thing they got put in most data center locations, substation, extra power to help feed it. They work with us. They realize it's a lot of mechanicals and all that, but they work with us to try to minimize the impact, the view of it, screening and all the other stuff. They work with us on that. And trust, Matt and I are not easy to work with sometimes. So, but they're great to do that. And that's what I'm trying to tell people. I know they talk about using energy and all that. That's fine. Use it because it's going to serve this country. Again, without them, we have no communications anymore. It's a different world now. The telephone lines don't exist anymore. They don't go by, by, what was the old? What was that called? Morse code? Telegraph, right. Morse code. So again, we're glad they're here, we're glad they're making the investment. And more importantly, we're glad they're making the investment in Elk Grove. So again, on behalf of the community, thank you. Don't walk away, I got gifts for you.
Oh, great.
Yes, more chocolates. So get the hands ready. Double up, come on.
I'll look at this.
There you go. Don't worry, guys, I got for you. We all get it. There you go. Thank you, thank you. Appreciate it. Now, if you folks want to leave after I'm done, just trustees report, that's boring. So you're more than welcome, you don't have to sit around the rest of me if you don't want to. But we do thank you for this, we appreciate it and we'll make sure it goes good use.
Thank you so much.
Thanks again. Thank you, give them another hand. And since Nick is working hard, too, I'll toss him one.
Oh, good grab. Terrible throw.
Okay, Chief's got a tear coming down. They both do.
I'll give one to Joe.
Well, Trustee Frankie, a little windy, a little windy?
Yeah, I had two birthdays during that.
Is it three figures now?
That's true.
Okay, move on, trustees report. Trustee Bush?
No report other than to say, "Good luck to all the students going back to school." The ones at Conant who are already back on Monday and then tomorrow, fifty-nine and two fourteen go back. And then Mead Junior High, where Michael Bush will be starting his first year, starts on Thursday. So very excited. Yeah, seventh grade. Matt's gonna be upset because Mead's right by his house and he's gotta deal with all his kids. Okay. That concludes my report.
It started making you feel old when your kids, that's when your kids really grow. Once they get near high, junior high and high school.
It's over. We'll be driving next month, my oldest.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, just an e-bike and scooter. With no license, right? That's.
Just like his dad.
Okay, trustee Miller?
No report.
Trustee Jeffrey Charles Frankie?
Can't get away from it. These guys don't have a report and I do. Opposite week. Only because the best party of the year is going to happen pretty soon and it's our Oktoberfest. Not my Frankie Fest. But Oktoberfest is happening on the twenty, or the nineteenth and twentieth of September, Friday night and Saturday. And Saturday is the town parade. Then it leads into the children's activities and that at the Oktoberfest and the families from three to seven. So I just want to let everybody know that tickets are gonna go on sale on the twenty-ninth of August. Now, if you buy your tickets early, you get twenty percent free. So their book's at ten, ten dollars usually, but it's gonna be eight dollars. So you can buy as many as you want, save twenty percent, believe me. We have more people doing it every year. In fact, most of the sales are pre-sale. So save that extra couple bucks. Now, if you buy hundreds of dollars like I do, I drink a lot of beer, what can I tell you? You save a lot of money. So you're going to get a postcard in the mail, every residence. Show that? Oh, I'm gonna show it to my TV. It doesn't work. Shows you with me electronics. Anyways, you're gonna get this, it's gonna tell you how you can buy your tickets. And also it tells you about the parade and all the activities. You can even use a QR code, which I don't know what that is, but you can use it to help buy your tickets. But please, buy your tickets early, save some money and come out. It's always a great event. Every year it grows. We started this with our sixtieth anniversary. And now, the following, next year it'll be our seventieth. So that'll be ten years of Oktoberfest. So please, please come out, but buy your tickets early. And again, if you need anything, it's on the village website under Oktoberfest. But buy your tickets early.
That's a great deal, twenty percent off.
It's a great deal, I mean, think about it.
And we hold the prices down to start with.
It's very affordable.
Yes. It's probably about half, people tell me all the time, they go to their Oktoberfest, how much more expensive, the beer, the food, everything is compared to what we charge.
And it's very friendly, safe. It's not crazy like some of these events where people, we try to keep control of everything. It's safe for your family to come. There's a lot of events, we try to make this a family event.
Well, and the families stick around after the parade. They've got the kids' fest area like that, that goes till like seven. And I was there last year about quarter to nine. Tons of kids were still there having fun.
All the family comes and they, everybody can eat and they have the long tables and there's the bands. It's, it's pretty cool. You can't get to, obviously, Germany for an Oktoberfest, but we're pretty close.
No, you do a great job. Again, Friday night tends to be more of the adult more event and dads come into like a family event.
Right after the parade, people just walk right up and we even have the Shriners coming.
And yeah, and with the parade, with the parade, do you, the Shriners come down?
Oh, sure, they try to park their little cars there, we won't let them.
But you think about it, the kids' fest area is all free. Any face painting, balloon.
If you want to eat or have something to drink, you can buy the tickets, but buy them early. But other than that, you can just walk around, kids can have a good time, you don't have to pay anything.
It's family-friendly, pricey too.
It is.
Okay, thank you Frankie Fest. Trustee Schmidt?
Thank you. In connection with that, our Sister Cities program, as you know, celebrating a twenty-five years relationship with our sister city, Ternamadimadese in Sicily. And we're gonna have a meeting this Monday, August eighteenth at six-thirty PM at Meeting Room E to discuss several events that have come up. One of them is gonna be that we are gonna be in the parade for, celebrate our twenty-fifth, the village parade.
Are they here for that?
No, they will not be, but our Sister City program. But we're also gonna, at this meeting, we're gonna discuss a delegation from our sister city that will be here in October. They are coming here for, to celebrate our, and we were there in June. And now they're coming here and they're gonna be here the second week in October. And they will participate in the Chicago Columbus Day Parade, which the theme this year is Sicily. So it's gonna work in, and I hope they have a delegation here, mayor, on our board meeting on October fourteenth. So they will be here. And then, yeah, we'll have a gala, we'll talk more about that, we're gonna have a big gala.
That's the seventeenth, isn't Friday the seventeenth?
The seventeenth is gonna be the gala, yes. We'll have more information on that. On a more somber note, as you know, I was the chief of police here for many years uh, as you know, I was the chief of police here for many years and, uh, we had a murder in our town back in nineteen seventy-six when I was a young patrolman. It involved Patricia Colombo and her boyfriend Frank DeLuca, who, uh, were, uh, convicted of killing her mother, father and thirteen-year-old brother. And as the mayor has always said, it was the day Elk Grove Village lost its innocence. Um, since, uh, they've been in prison, uh, Frank DeLuca died in prison several years ago, but Patty Colombo was still in prison. And, uh, retired deputy chief Ray Rose, who was the chief investigator on the case, and I have been following this, this whole case since its inception. And, um, Patty's gonna be up for parole again in this year. And we've been advised by the parole board that there's gonna be a hearing on October second. So there's gonna be an article in the newsletter coming out that we are asking for residents to, uh, send letters to, uh, uh, support the refusal of her getting parole. The judge sentenced her and her boyfriend Frank DeLuca to two to three hundred years with the idea that they would never get out. And of course Frank died, uh, in, in prison several years ago. So we are gonna follow this case. We continue to follow this case. We're gonna ask for support from the village. There'll be more information in the newsletter. And we're to send you letters and emails. I'll talk about this at the next two, uh, board meetings. But the, uh, hearing is gonna be set for October, uh, October fourth, I believe it is. The decision will not be made that day. That's just a meeting in front of one or two members of the parole board. There'll be a meeting later on where we will go to Springfield in front of the full parole board and provide testimony and present letters and that for the denial, hopefully she will be denied. Again, this was a case where, uh, they, they were convicted of killing the, uh, uh, mother, father and the thirteen-year-old brother. And this was a national story. Uh, after, uh, they pulled the thirteen-year-old boy out of bed, middle of the night, shot him in the head and then she stabbed him eighty-six times with scissors. Uh, it was a very brutal crime and the most vicious crime that's been committed in this village. So we are gonna follow this thing. We're gonna ask support from the people in our community to send letters. And more information will be available in the newsletter that's coming out. And I'll talk more about this at the next two board meetings. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Jerish.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, thank you, Align, for being here tonight. And thank you for your generous check, um, to the cemetery restoration. That's awesome. Uh, thank you also to Public Works, Police, Fire, uh, Village Manager's Office. The entire village staff who worked so hard this summer during our summer concert series and play picnic party and all the events that go on. Um, you're phenomenal and you keep our village safe and, uh, do a fantastic job. So thanks for that. Summer's been a busy month and lots of business ambassador visits, ribbon cuttings, exciting things going on in the village. I've been able to attend multiple things. So, um, just learning more about all the companies that are here. And we've got a great, great thing going on in that industrial park. Reminder, Farmer's Market is still going on through October, uh, second and fourth Saturdays of the month. Uh, the next one will be October twenty-third. And that is from nine, um, eight AM till one in the Christus Victor parking lot on Arlington Heights Road. Christus Victor Church, their parking lot, excuse me. Um, they're doing a great job. It's a nice setting. So I encourage everyone to come out. And that concludes my report.
Yeah, um, trustee, uh, you said October, you meant August, right?
No, I believe the Farmer's Market goes through mid.
Oh, you said the next one was October.
Oh, I apologize. I misspoke. Thank you.
It's August, right?
August twenty-third. Thank you.
Oh, no, no problem.
Thank you, trustee Frankie.
Hey.
You stayed awake. I appreciate it.
For you, I can stay awake, can't I? I don't know.
Well, you have to with me. You never know what's coming out.
I do. It's true.
Thank you.
No problem.
Trustee Laskin.
All right, thank you. Um, the Fire Citizen Academy is gonna be August twentieth. So that's gonna start. Um, you could still sign up. There's a couple of spots left. And that is, uh, so sign up either tonight or tomorrow. Uh, uh, so if you really want to go, please sign up as soon as you can. Uh, it starts on August twentieth, uh, six PM. It goes on for six weeks. Uh, they're gonna talk about the operations, uh, some hands-on, uh, uh, material as well. We're gonna probably see what it's like to be suited up and going into a building maybe. Uh, so I'm really, I'm gonna be joining it. So I'm gonna be really excited to, uh, to check it all out. So that concludes my report.
Is it, uh, Wednesdays still? Is it?
Wednesdays, correct.
Wednesdays, yeah. It, it's great. I mean, I did it with my wife and she got up in the tower a hundred feet and I, I can't even get up a ladder. So it, it's really cool what you do. So you're really gonna enjoy it.
I'm looking forward to it.
I did. I did.
Okay, move on now. Accounts payable warrant, first July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Oh, hey, that's me. I missed a month. I, uh, I say we pay the, uh, accounts payable warrant for July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five for fifteen million, seven hundred and three thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars and eighty-six cents.
Second.
Motion by trustee Frankie, second by trustee Miller. Jen, can you call the roll?
Trustee Bush.
Aye.
Trustee Frankie.
Aye.
Trustee Jerish.
Aye.
Trustee Laskin.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt.
Aye. Motion passed six to nothing. August twelfth, twenty twenty-five.
I make a motion that we pay the accounts payable warrant for August twelfth, twenty twenty-five for six hundred fifteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventeen cents.
Second.
Motion by trustee Frankie, second by trustee Miller. Without objection, court votes, demonstrator, six to nothing. Tonight we have consent agenda items, A is in Albuquerque through Q is in quite good looking tonight, Mr. Nickerbocker. Can I have a motion?
Talking about yourself?
Still moved. Excuse me, still moved.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Jerish, second by trustee Miller. Um, any questions, council, any board members or staff? Anybody in the audience on the consent agenda? Seeing none, hearing none, record the votes, demonstrator, six to nothing. Uh, regular agenda, no items, Mr. Matthew Rone?
No items under regular agenda.
Plan Commission?
Uh, we have one item under Plan Commission. On August fourth, Plan Commission met to hear PC dock at twenty-five dash five to consider the petition for special use to modify a parking plan for property located at six-ten Meacham Road. That was the consensus of the Plan Commission by a seven-oh vote to approve the petition for special use to modify a parking plan.
Okay. And all petitions here tonight, we're gonna table this. I think we table it till January of twenty-six. We'll move on to another. So, any question for any board members? All went good? Anybody in the audience here to address us on this issue item? Seeing none, hearing none. Um, Mr. Nickerbocker, uh, we need to have our vote to have our attorney prepare necessary documents for next board meeting?
Correct.
Yep. So can I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Motion by trustee Frankie, second.
Second.
Second by trustee Bush. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, let the show, record showing ass approval. Uh, Nick, you're good. You don't have to come back in two, actually four weeks. It's a mere formality. You're set to go. Um, you want to update us on anything with anything with it? Come on. Here, why don't you go down the other one. That way you talk to the community better. Again, Nick Papa Nicholas with, uh, wingspan or Nicholas Associates.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, board, uh, and everyone for having us. Super excited about this project. Jared, you and I are gonna get to do a lot of work together over the coming weeks to put this plan into action. But one thing, as the mayor was going through, is thirty minutes. Um, I thought about something for next year.
He just slides it out, you know?
Instead of the wrestling match, we're gonna do shoot the puck at the mayor in the net.
With no equipment, no equipment.
And we're gonna make it a fundraiser. So we're gonna make it a lot, raise a lot of money for the village. Just kidding, just kidding. But, uh,
Second. Now wait a minute, Nick. Did you see the guns on the mayor? Are you sure you want to talk like that? Are you sure?
The puck might break if it hits your arm. You know why those things shatter?
There was a motion on the table right now.
Go ahead, sorry.
As I've said in previous meetings, we're super excited about this project. The hockey community, the figure skating community. Um, it's more than just that. I think the food and beverage perspective, uh, the restaurant's gonna be spectacular. Uh, the grab and go, uh, down on the main floor is gonna be awesome. I've been by the site a gazillion times over the last, you know, six, eight months, uh, visualizing this project and the enhancement that it's gonna make at Beasterfield and Meacham is gonna be tremendous. So, uh, super excited to continue our partnership with the village. And we're ready to get to work and we appreciate all the support.
And still optimistic for next August?
Yeah, so the way hockey seasons work, uh, for programs, we, it's kinda like opening a school. And you have to deliver mid-August or by September one because the fall winter season for the hockey community kicks in gear. If we miss that, then we gotta delay it one for, one full year. Cause they can't just start midstream. So it's a very mission critical, uh, schedule. Uh, working with the utility companies, ComEd, Nycor, uh, super important to get the buildings disconnected. And like I said, Staples, we're gonna help, you know, uh, work their inventory down to get them out as quickly as they can. So we can start building, so.
So good. And the view, um, that's moving along now. It's starting to.
The view's moving along really well. Um, as you stated, we've got asphalt binder down. Um, we're gonna have glass starting to go in this week. Uh, continued more masonry and siding going in. Uh, build out for the respective tenants is ongoing right now. So in the next, you know, thirty to sixty days, it's really gonna come together. And as soon as we get a little further along, we're gonna keep peeling back some of the fencing and windscreening to really show it and open it up.
Well, and I'll tell you what's nice too is, you know, the big giant building, the building on Elgackwin and Arlington Road and Arlington Heights right there by the tollway. The architectural differences between that big giant box and what we do with the different buildings, the different elevations, the different, um, architectural features and stuff. It's really gonna show the way it should be done. So.
Residential detailing for the multifamily, very luxurious. Um, just, it's going to look the part. Residential. You're gonna wanna live there.
Yep. And then you got the bridge coming in, the lighting on that. The, that's gonna be a corner people will be talking about. And that's why I said, it's so important with Align doing their part by making their place, it just makes that whole gateway going into the village that much better. They go down to Tech Park or they go on with the Bussy Woods area. It's gonna be gorgeous, but it's always your first impression that makes the most important point. So I appreciate the work you guys are doing.
Absolutely. Thank you for the partnership.
Thanks, Nick. Take care.
Nick, real quick, the, the restaurant in the, um, in the hockey rink, is that given, like, out to another company or is that just?
No, well, it is, it is all integral with our company.
Okay.
As my dad used to say. Well, we used to be the Greeks that ate at the restaurants. Now we're the ones that run them. Um, but, uh, it's Hattie's Club.
Okay.
So, uh, paying homage to the hat trick.
Oh, cool.
And we are opening in Rosemont Ice Arena, uh, in the next few weeks. And this concept will be very similar to that as well.
Thank you.
Woodfire pizza, burgers, steaks. It'll, it'll be a nice menu.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Why, no? Thank you, buddy. Appreciate it. Okay, um, anything else, Mr. Matthew?
Two items under the zoning board of appeals.
Okay.
Um, on July seventeenth, the zoning board of appeals met here ZBA docket twenty-five dash four with petitioner seeking a variation of the zoning ordinance as it pertains to permitted locations of fences and residential districts uh, for property located at thirteen seventy-seven Volcomer Trail. Um, it was the consensus of the zoning board of appeals by a seven-oh vote to do grant the requested variation to permit the installation of the fence.
Okay, um, petitioner here tonight? Okay, you're fine. Don't worry about it. You're fine, sir. Um, any question for anybody? If not, I need a motion to have attorney prepare necessary documents.
Still moved?
We have a motion by trustee Miller, second by trustee Bush. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose. Sir, you're set to go. I apologize for a long night. Actually, hang on. For a long night, can't let it go without some chocolate. You do not need to come back in a month when we, um, formally adopt it. When we formally adopt it, just go ahead and get started whenever you want to.
Kids never get asleep. He eats twenty chocolates before a meeting. That's why he talks like this.
Okay, the other one, Mr. Rone?
Um, also on July seventeenth, uh, the zoning board of appeals met here ZBA docket twenty-five dash five uh, with petitioner seeking a variation of the zoning ordinance as it pertains to maximum ground coverage in residential zoning districts for property located at three fifty-two Cedar Lane. Uh, it was the consensus of the zoning board of appeals by a seven-oh vote to do grant, uh, the requested variation as it pertains to maximum ground coverage.
Okay, petitioner here tonight? Okay, you're fine, sir. Any questions, concerns? I need a motion to have attorney prepare necessary documents.
Still moved.
We have a motion by trustee Laskin, second by trustee Frankie. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, let the record showing ass approval. Sir, you're good to go. Um, hang on, I'm out of chocolates for you. I feel bad you waited here so long tonight. Okay, we're gonna give one. Jen, give you some more chocolates on the way out. You do not need to come back. You can start your work right away. Just work with the engineering department to get the, uh, permit. But you're good to go. I thank you for work with our zoning board going through the process. We really appreciate it. Okay, thank you again. She'll take care of ya. Okay, anything else, Mr. Matthew Rone?
Uh, no, that's it.
Okay. She gave you more than one, right? She learned after the best. Good job. Okay, recycling and waste committee, trustee Jeffrey Charles Frankie.
No report.
Judiciary planning zoning committee, trustee Bush.
No report.
Capital improvements committee, trustee Schmidt.
Just reporting that our summer, uh, resurfacing programs are coming to an end, uh, but there's still construction going on. I'm in my road. Uh, Devine in Arlington and Devine at Tony's. So please be careful going through those areas. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Uh, capital television committee, trustee Laskin.
No report.
Youth committee, trustee Bush.
All right, I got one, mayor. First time in nine years I'm going back to Elk Grove High School without the cereal bowl trophy. After we lost to Rolling Meadows last year.
The one, uh, someone guaranteed we win?
Guaranteed. Um, so we're back, uh, September twenty-sixth, Rolling Meadows at home. Our turf this time. So we've got some, uh, planning going starting tomorrow to, uh, try to get that trophy back.
Well, the biggest event you have is Coach Gould is gone.
That's right. No, no giant check coming that way. So, um, so.
He did fund.
Oh yeah, gosh, yeah. Yeah, there was something.
Okay, you'll let us know at our board meeting on the ninth.
How we're doing, yes.
And what we need to do. That gives us about two weeks.
Right, afterwards, yeah. So we'll have two board meetings before then.
So this year, if you say we can win it.
We can. We can always win it. We just, we just didn't, you know? We collected twice as much as we've ever collected. And we, you know, we lost out to an NFL salary. So, uh, now they got like a normal, regular teacher guy. So we can compete with the donations.
Okay, well, keep it updated. If you guys step up, we'll step up.
All right, sounds good.
Fair enough?
Yes.
Okay.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. Uh, information committee, trustee Miller.
Actually, I do have a small thing to say.
You did not?
I just remembered something.
Did we not hear her say back there, there's nothing tonight? That's what I thought.
I just remembered something though. On the information committee, composed of trustee Jerish and trustee Bush and myself, we did some filming with Channel Six and we talked about how the community can find out information in various ways. Whether it's through coffee with the board, whether it's coming to a meeting, whether it's a newsletter, whether it is contacting the village staff. We, uh, did a video of that and it's running in the month of August on Channel Six. There you go.
Wow.
That concludes my report.
You guys are actually on?
We did something.
Now, will you be on more than trustee Frankie?
No.
I, I wish, but I don't think so.
No, because I have to do my interview about the Comic-Con coming up.
Who's gonna interview me for the parade then?
They will not let you and me in the same studio.
We can't do it together?
No. I'm not lying. He won't let us together.
Okay, business leaders forum, trustee Schmidt.
Yes, we had two visits to businesses, uh, in the last month, but I was not enabled to send them. So I'm gonna refer to trustee Miller and trustee Jeros for that.
Ladies first.
Go ahead.
So I'll talk about the Mammon, uh, group. Uh, we visited this company in the industrial park. They're a design, construction and build company that began in nineteen ninety-seven. Um, the letters of their name, M-A-M-A-N, stand for the five females who, uh, started the company and who now run the company. And, um, a great visit, a great place, uh, that helps, uh, medical supplies. Different, help me out, trustee Miller. Um, or I've got the list here, but they do different, uh, design and build and they help companies, uh, get their insides and their outsides looking great. And then I attended, uh, A and A, uh, custom printing company in the village. They did an official ribbon cutting. And, uh, that was great to attend. And then I'll let trustee, uh, Miller talk about Shubara.
So Shubara machine, uh, located on seven fifty-five Green Leaf is, uh, uh, I, I guess I could just say metrotronics, uh, oriented production system. They produce equipment, um, that is capable of a, um, or as precise as four thousandths of a millimeter when they are cutting and tolerating, um, different die casting, molding machines, system robotics. They are used for medical, aerospace, electronics, engineering and packaging. It was fascinating to see the, the, um, the engineering that they do. They have served the United States for fifty years. They have over three thousand employees worldwide. And they have over six thousand customers. So they are, um, it was, it was just amazing to see the engineering that they have. and they have over 6,000 customers. So they are, it was, it was just amazing to see the engineering that they have in this facility.
And. Yeah, one, one other interesting facet about them is they also sell a service where they will monitor a tool and die machine remotely. So if a tool and die designer buys 12 of their machines, there's sensors and monitors on them that can watch the production and predict when a machine might be ready to fail or not. So it really is helpful for a manufacturer to keep running. Time is money.
So their customer would be somebody that would be, that would need a machine to make this, this small of a plastic cap. So they would build the machine and then sell it to their customer and their customer would make this. All the things that we don't even think about, they, they make the machine for that. So it was really fascinating.
It was. Here in Elk Grove.
To close our report.
Wow, I haven't seen a tag team report in a long time.
Teamwork makes a dream work.
Mammon, you know what's, what, one of their, I think it was in your picture with him, claim to fame, one of those people had?
He was the mayor of Pashto Tights.
He was Pashto Tights, that's right. Yep. Pace, Mayor Pace, yep. Okay, anything else?
Nope.
Health Community Services, trustee Jerish.
So the report from the August 2nd blood drive, we had 18 donations, which each pint of blood saves three lives, so that converts to 54 lives. A little low, but we have one more blood drive coming up. That's December 6th. And I encourage everybody to put that down on their calendar. So to date, this year, 2025, we've saved 234 lives. And let's keep going, folks. And then I also wanted to report that our Elk Grove Cares social workers, Tila and Kristen, attended a back-to-school event for School District 59 at John Jay School in Mount Prospect. They were there to connect with families, distribute school supplies, and share information about our community resources that can help families. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Personnel Committee, trustee Schmidt.
No report.
There's no airport report at this time. Parade Committee, as I said before, we had a meeting. I want to do that. They'll be coming up soon. 8 PM on the 20th, Midsummer Classic Series. We're all done with it. Looking forward to next year's. So we'll be testing Mr. Nickerbecker on that soon. Special Events Committee, the next event we have is Frankie Fest. So that'll be coming up and the parade. All tied. No report on our liquor commission. Any report from our beloved village manager, Mr. Matthew Rone?
No report.
And our village clerk, Jen?
No report.
Okay. Let's see, any unfinished business on that, Mr. Nickerbecker? Nope, he's got a chocolate down here. Okay. Any new items from any board member tonight? Actually, we didn't do too bad. Got them pretty quick.
What are you talking about?
Anybody in the audience wish to address us tonight? You going to work out tomorrow, Emo? I'm telling you, I'm starting like that short haircut. As much as I miss Zeus or Sampson, I'm sorry, Sampson. Looks good. That's the top. Can't get higher than Zeus.
I mean, God.
No, no, no. You going to meet our Mr., you said, Chef? Yep, good. Ellen? Two months I come see you? Okay. He filled in for you admirably on Saturday. He always does. He always says he's got two pieces of coffee cake, one for you, one for him, and somehow he never leaves with both. He doesn't leave with one.
That one never sees it.
Yeah, it never sees it, so. Ma'am, any questions or anything? Well, good. Okay. Sir, all good? Okay. Okay, nothing further. I need a motion. Look, I'm just telling you, how sharp Brian, aren't you impressed with that? How sharp Brian looks with the tie choice and everything?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I forgot. I didn't forget. Oh, you're nice and tanned. I mean, he's really.
It's good look.
Yeah, doing a good job.
The job suits him, I guess, huh?
Yeah, it's, job suits him well. Look at that, you know?
Dress for the job you want, not the one you have, you know?
You know, Jared just kind of stays away from him. He just kind of gives a space. He knows what he's doing.
Why do we put a teacher on the board?
Okay, I know. We need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second? I have a motion by trustee Bush, second by trustee Jeffrey Charles Frankie. Jen, call the roll, please.
Trustee Laskin?
I gotta go quick.
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt?
Aye.
Trustee Bush?
Aye.
Trustee Frankie?
Aye.
Trustee Jerish?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn. Past 6-0. Folks, we'll see you in four weeks. Enjoy the rest of summer. Have a great Labor Day. Meeting adjourned.